Reamer.
Here.
Husey.
Here.
Vitak.
Here.
Huber.
Yes.
Schultz.
Here.
Hader.
Here.
Mendel.
Here.
Merte.
Here.
Ellipson. 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 Absent. Trudeau.
Here.
Negro.
Here.
Messender.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Hoopa. Excused. Frannick.
Here.
Wilhelm.
Here.
Fendor.
Here.
Seventeen present, one excused, one absent.
We'll now have a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand in this space, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda. Bill?
I would make that motion.
Pat?
You say second.
You say seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sure that was a approve, aye. Motion carries. Public hearing. The Tamarack Health.
So this is for a conduit borrowing issuance that Tamarack is running through the county?
We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Ronald make a motion to open the public hearing.
Marty? Motion by Ron, seconded by Marty to open the public hearing. I think that's a, is that a voice roll call vote? Or all in favor to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I gotta wait a little bit for Liz. Any public comments? Any public comments on the Tamarack Health? Public hearing? Any public comments? Anybody online? We'll keep the public hearing open until we get to the item 6B on the agenda. And we'll go into public comments pertinent to agenda items. Oh, I missed that. Okay, yeah, okay. Public here, we'll open the, need a motion to open the public hearing on the budget. Motion by Tom Reamer, seconded by Rich. Seconded by Rich. All in favor to open the public hearing on the 2026 budget proposal, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have people who have signed to make comments. First one is Kathleen Russell.
We need a microphone, please.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Russell, and I'm a, actually a resident of Bayfield County, but I am a landowner in Ashland County, down in the town of Sandburn. I have owned and operated a small real estate business, a successful real estate business in our region for over 35 years. So I'm aware of the importance of spending money in a fiscally responsible manner in order to make money. The impact and importance of the Ashland Area Development Corporation is what I'm here to speak to you briefly about. You must be aware of the long list of Ashland County residents who have taken advantage of the business services that AADC offers. Many have gained specific knowledge in starting a business, expanding one that they already have, or avoiding failure for a new venture they were considering. All of those things are important to the commercial business atmosphere in our county and the success of employment and commerce in general. The impacts have been huge in Ashland County, from Glidden to Mellon to the city of Ashland itself, as well as Madeline Island. While many AADC clients have gained knowledge and access to local professional services such as accounting, legal assistance, and marketing, others were actually able to buy Ashland County land and buildings in order to establish and grow their business and to build equity in it, staying in control of their destiny by avoiding paying rent. I know from a real estate point of view, that is key when you're looking at the success of the business, which could have a lease end prior to when your business is wanted to end. It's important to control your real estate if you can. Several empty commercial buildings in the region have sold thanks to AADC, the grants it has applied for, and the client education it's been able to provide. Otherwise, many of those buildings would still be on the open market. Ashland Area Development Corporation's Executive Director and Board of Directors have been a model of responsible budget management. They've been diligent in seeking funding for their operations outside of tax money from the county or from the city. They've applied for grants to assist their clients directly as well. In the past, Ashland County has participated in fiscal support of AADC. I understand that that wasn't done in 2024 and 2025 budget years. I would like, as an Ashland County taxpayer, that the board invests in AADC and think of it as an investment in order that our county receives the biggest benefits from AADC's continued strong performance. I want to see an even bigger return on our taxpayer-generated revenue through AADC actions such as increased commercial property value, increased sales tax and lodge tech, lodging tax revenue, increased employment, and increased tourism for the businesses in our region. The county has few departments that it funds which actually generate revenue for the county. Think of forestry and tourism, those things came to mind to me. But AADC is a private or a partner, a nonprofit partner, that actually helps the citizens of the area generate revenue for Ashland County. An investment that you would make for your fiscal year coming up would help to sustain that. It is not asking for 100%, it's saying, would you be a partner with other support that they are able to generate? And I thank you for your time and for serving the public on the county board.
Thank you. Next is Jason Fishbach.
Morning, everybody.
Press that button in the middle area.
You're good now? Good. Alright, my name is Jason Fishbach. My wife and I run a farm business near Sandburn, and I'm currently serving as the President of the Ashland Area Development Corporation. My goal in these three minutes is to try to reset the conversation around the ADC and hopefully convince you to return to and invest in the ADC partnership. So first, who is the ADC? What is the ADC? It's not any one person. It's a partnership. It's a three-way partnership between businesses and entrepreneurs, the city, and the county. And for decades, we have worked together to be and to do the hard work of economic development. Like any team, we each play a different and important role. The county provides the essential infrastructure that makes business possible, roads, law and order, zoning, et cetera. The ADC's role has been to leverage that investment and provide direct technical assistance to entrepreneurs and businesses, like business planning, coaching, training, mentoring, capitalization, et cetera. We have right now an ongoing surge of entrepreneurship in our community. And our organization is, ADC is swamped trying to meet all that need. We've been lucky the last few years as we've had grant funding that has allowed us to staff up to meet the need. As an example, with our recent Fund Diversity Grant, we provided $1.2 million across 19 businesses that resulted in $4.3 million of new business investment in the county and another $94,000 that went out to 76 businesses to hire attorneys, web designers, accountants, and other professional services for those businesses. But, like the county, the post-COVID dollars are ending and the needs and opportunities remain. Funding from the city and county is incredibly helpful to providing the solid foundation for the ADC and its operations. Okay, so it's been suggested that because the ADC has the Enterprise Center, that the county shouldn't support the ADC. Let me suggest a different way to look at it. The county should work with the ADC for many reasons, but one of those is because we have the Enterprise Center. It's no different than hiring a plumber, an electrician, carpenter. You want the people doing the work for you to have the best tools possible. And that's what the Enterprise Center is. It's a tool in our community's tool belt that helps businesses start and grow and nonprofits serve our community. In my opinion, our three-way partnership should lead into it. We should make it even bigger and better. Now, it's also been suggested that given the size of our community, that the ADC should only have one employee. I really don't understand that rationale. As a business owner and as a parent raising four kids that hope to find good jobs close to home, I want the best economic development corporation possible. We all should. We want the ADC helping entrepreneurs, finding us more workers, building more housing, filling the hole left by Northland, expanding our forestry and agricultural economies, getting us a pool and other amenities in our community, and on and on. If we can find the resources, we should have five, 10, 15 employees. There is that much need and that much opportunity. Why limit ourselves to just one? As business owners, there's a quarterly ritual that we all just love to do. We get to collect sales tax from our customers and send it to you all to spend. Now, for sure, we want you to focus first on the roads. We want you to focus on law and order and your core county functions. That's what makes business possible. That's your bread and butter. But, as you consider the budget today, we ask you to return to the ADC partnership and invest, if you can, a small portion of those sales tax dollars back into the ADC, back into our businesses. And I can assure you, as business owners on the board of the ADC, we will ensure it's put to good use. Thank you.
Next is Carla Smith.
Hi, my name is Carla Smith. I'm an attorney in town. I come in peace, I promise. I will not speak as long as I'm used to speaking, and I guess I only have three minutes, so I better hurry up. So a couple of years ago, I was looking to buy a building in town, which would be prohibitively expensive and unreasonable for a solo practitioner in law. I was directed by the chamber to reach out to the ADC because of the resources that it provides. Not only did it provide the grant to purchase the building and make the cash flow possible for practicing law, but it also connected me with numerous resources. You know, Abby Miller of Stonebridge Marketing, who did my website, you know, Entrepreneur Fund, who helps support a lot of local businesses in town to help them who might not otherwise qualify for other types of loans, as well as, you know, helping me make the connections to, you know, I hate everyone from Joma Electric to Blakeman Plumbing to numerous local contractors. And so the cash flow from not only the grant, but from all of the other resources flowed through this economy multiple times. On top of those connections, I've been approached by those economic development agencies to help them connect more with Ashland. And these are people who provide significant investments for our local people. And so I do see this, as the other people had pointed out, as an investment because, you know, the numerous clients too that I have gotten from AADC who need legal services, I see them everywhere on Main Street. They are flourishing, their businesses. I hear people talk about them on the Black Hat. All of these industries and all of these businesses, you know, really AADC has been working with in the background. And, you know, Carver of AADC has also been writing news articles about the work that AADC does, as well as very nicely putting together an article about my new businesses. That news article went viral and went all across the state, and so I had people across the state calling me and asking me about the development in Ashland. I think it's extremely essential to see this as an investment, partnering with businesses so Ashland can continue to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make comments on the budget for 2026? Otherwise, we'll keep that public hearing open as well until we get to the agenda item. We'll move on to public comment pertinent to agenda items on the agenda for today. Anyone wishing to make public comment, either online or in person? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation by Landmark Conservancy.
Is this on? Oh, it is. Good morning, everyone. I am here representing Landmark Conservancy and also Bayfield County. My name is Sarah Hudson, and I am the Recreation Coordinator for Bayfield County Forestry and Parks Department. I am here to talk about the Maxwell property, or I guess it's still called the Maxwell property, that is owned by Northland College and has owned, been owned by them since 1984 is when they got it. Landmark Conservancy and Ashland and Bayfield Counties are working to acquire the 131-acre property that sits just south of Ashland. Both, about 90 acres is located in Ashland County, and let's see here, 40 acres is located in Bayfield County. Since then, it's been used for research, and students and community members have visited throughout the time. For those of you who aren't familiar with Landmark Conservancy, they helped create the Tyler Forks back in 1984, 1984, oh my goodness, sorry, in 2019. Missing out my notes already, with the help of the county's leadership. Landmark is a nonprofit land trust who works across Northwest and Western Wisconsin, Wisconsin to protect lands for its natural resource values and legacy for everyone forever. They have helped protect the Tyler Forks stream, Lincoln Community Forest, Telemark Forest Preserve, Houghton Falls Preserve, and recently purchased the Iron River Community Forest and the Siskiyou River Preserve are all the ones that they have done to date. What is, what we're working on today is that, oh, thank you, there's the, oh, you're ill of it. So there's the outline of the property that is there. It's along the White River. And I'm gonna go off my notes now and kinda go from my head. What we are hoping to do is that Landmark Conservancy has already applied for a Knowles Nelson stewardship grant to help pay for part, half of the acquisition of the property. What we are going for now is a Wisconsin Coastal Management Program grant to pay for the other half of the property. We are looking for Ashland County to be the, or the person who submits the grant to Wisconsin Coastal Management Program. All three entities, Bayfield County, Landmark Conservancy, and Ashland County are all helping write the grant, which is due on Monday. So we've been furiously putting this all together, but there is about 4,000 linear feet of shoreline along the White River that is there, that is currently part of the Maxwell Street property. We are hoping that once it is acquired, it will then be transferred over to the DNR at a future date to be determined, so it can become part of that White River Fisheries area that sits just south of there on the other side of the river and then up to the White River Dam. That's all I got. Do you all, can they ask questions? I don't know how a county board meeting is run.
I think we can, yeah, we can ask questions if anybody has any questions. No questions?
What are the benefits of this becoming underneath the Conservancy's control?
Yeah, one of the benefits will be that it can never be developed. So it has been not on the tax roll for the last 40 years, 41 years, because it has been owned by the college for so long, and this will just continue that it is no longer, it'll continue to be unfragmented, so easier for wildlife. It'll create more public access to the White River, because before it was privately owned by Northland. Now what will be publicly owned? It'll make sure that any management that is done has to meet some criteria within land that is within the Conservation and Preservation and then Conservation Easement Program. As part of the Knowles Nelson acquisition grant, you do have to provide some kind of public access. So some very primitive trails will be built, mostly angler trails for people to be able to access the White. What else is the benefits? There are, there's actually quite a, a lot of species that live out there that some of the groundwork that Northland College did. I was lucky enough to be able to take a tour with them before the college closed in May. It was like the last day it was open. And got to take a tour with some of the professors, and this is where they found out that the red squirrels glow in the dark with black lights, and they saw, you know, a wolf at one point in time that they didn't think would ever make its way there. It was passing through. There's black bear there. It's just a very unique forest type that is there on that 131 acres.
Go ahead, Dan.
The other thing is, this is part of the DNR, Bativer had both been acquiring most of the property on the White River because the DNR is using that to develop the wildlife fishery in the, in the stream. So this helps with the DNR's efforts to continue that.
Blake?
So the purchase price is what?
We are waiting for a second appraisal on this, but currently the purchase price is $427,000. Both grants will pay for it though, so neither county is on the hook for any financial money right at the moment.
That's saying that we get the grant?
Yes.
We have not been awarded any grant yet.
Right. And if we don't get either of the grants and the property, then we have to figure out what that next step is. We're not on the hook, at this moment in time, you're not on the hook for anything unless the grants are awarded and we go through on that property. I believe I'm saying that correct, Dan?
Yeah.
George?
Microphone, please.
Could you tell us a little bit more about the existing trail and parking area and sort of what's already there?
Yep. So on the property itself right now is a, a building that probably should be demolitioned. The college put some money into it to try to make it back into a classroom, but then I think fell into financial trouble during the COVID pandemic. So the building is there. It could be reused if you wanted to, but I believe it is recommended that the building be demolished. And we could, that could be part of the sale that we were talking about. There is also an old observatory there, a small little dome that when Northland had astronomy program, students would go out there and do their studies. There's a primitive, there's like two primitive trails. One is pretty well-worn by students. It's about a mile and a half, two miles that goes from the parking area right off 118, which can house about 10 cars or so. Kind of meanders around by the wetland that was there and then goes to the westernmost 40 and then comes down and goes along the White River and then back up. And then there's another trail that kind of goes around the northern part of the Bayfield County property and then connects to them. So, but they're very primitive trails right now. Mostly, I would call them angler trails or just basic hiking trails. Students made them as part of their classwork and also part of their research purposes. They've done a little, sorry, backing track. What else is on the property is that there is a well system there that now, that hasn't been closed down, that houses, that is into the building. And there is a septic system that is in place too. But that's really it. There's nothing significant except that one building that is salvageable.
Has Bayfield County approved this? Yep?
They are meeting tonight, and I believe it's on their agenda tonight, but they don't, Mark Abels Allison, from the conversations we've had in our office and with him, we're pretty certain they will approve the resolution also.
What is the importance that Ashland County approve this?
Well, right now, Ashland County is going to submit the grant. So in order for the county to submit the grant and to be able to get the money, the county board needs to approve the resolution. Bayfield County is already submitting two coastal management grants. So we, when we were talking, we thought it would be a good idea for Ashland County to submit a coastal grant so that we weren't competing against the other two grants we were looking for. So to just show support to this project, it's really important that the county approve the resolution. And again, there's no money on the line right now. If neither grant is awarded, we come up with a Plan B, C, or D.
Any other questions for Sarah? George?
Yeah, so just to be clear, when we come to the resolution on the agenda, we're only voting approval to apply for the grant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you all for your time.
We'll move on to the regular agenda. And approval of county board minutes from September 16th. Laura?
This is Laura Negro, so moved.
Is there a second? Second, motion by Laura, seconded by Tom to approve the minutes of the September 16th meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Tamarack conduit loan, approval of the Tamarack conduit loan. I think first we need to close the public hearing on the Tamarack proposal. We need a motion and a second. Bill?
Shouldn't we close the public hearing on the Tamarack?
Marty? Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing on the Tamarack. What's that? Motion by Bill, seconded by Marty to close the public hearing on Tamarack. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the resolution regarding the Tamarack project. Gary?
If anyone finds this inappropriate that the chair makes the motion to approve, I will make that motion.
Motion by Gary, seconded by George, to approve the resolution for the Tamarack project.
Okay, I'll just begin this just real quick. This is gonna come back to us next year. It's a little complicated, but there's some IRS rules that say for this type of issuance, we can only issue up to $10 million a year. And because our own debt levy is on this same agenda, Tamarack prefers to do only a portion of it this year and then do the rest of it next year. That way, we're certain that the IRS is not gonna have a problem with any of this. So, so we will see this again early next year in an amount of 2 million. And I just wanna say there is no risk to Ashland County. We've done this before. Most of you should probably remember when we had to change how the interest rate is calculated because LIBOR went away. Was that right? LIBOR? Yep. So we had to change the terms of the loan because of that, because of that change by the government. the government. So there's a representative here from Tamarack can ask specific questions if you have any. Otherwise Finance Committee unanimous may approve this.
Bill?
I guess I'm in favor of it, but how many jobs is this going to create, this new addition?
Microphone, please.
Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Kent Tomason, the CFO at the hospital. Currently we have about, we have seven physicians signed up. There's about two or three other offers out. You can pretty much multiply those by about three or four for staff that would need to support those physicians. So we're probably talking 25, 30 minimum. We plan on building that physician practice larger than that. Probably end up somewhere in the 15 range for providers. We're trying to fill the access, primary care access needs that we have in our community and keep care local, so.
Laura?
Is that the whole scope of the project? Is it just direct care? Is there any mental health going to be taken into consideration for this?
So we already have outpatient mental health treatment over at our behavioral health unit that's staying. We do have shell space on the second floor of this for the anticipated growth. That first floor will probably cover the, I'd say, the first 10 providers. There's about 20 exam rooms. So then that second floor will accommodate, you know, the additional providers that we're anticipating come on board.
But for any kind of, is there any piece that might expand what you have for inpatient care for mental health with this?
So as a critical access hospital, we are capped at 10 beds. That's all the IRS will, well, the CMS will allow us to have. So it's a 10, 10-bed distinct part unit is basically what it's called. So we can't expand beyond that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Bill?
How much do you anticipate next year coming back to the board and requesting?
So I think because of your own issuance, we still like to come back for $2 million for this project. We don't anticipate any other projects, if that's what you're asking.
Any other comments, questions? Otherwise, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the Tamarack health proposal? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, Liz. Motion carries.
Please use your microphones.
My agenda on my iPad is... What's that? Okay, next item is resolution for the landmark, support the Maxwell Forest project. Laura?
Liz Befranek, second.
Motion by Laura, seconded by Liz. Any other comments or questions? George?
Okay, I need to abstain from this vote because I'm an adjacent property owner along the river, directly adjacent to this property, and I'm very familiar with it. And my vote could be interpreted either for or against. I might have a bias either way. But it is a remarkably beautiful piece of land. It has excellent access off of Highway 118 with a good driveway, a large parking area, and a trail that's already well-used. It's kind of like the trails up at Frog Bay. You know, it's a primitive hiking trail, but it's well-worn. It goes all the way down to the river and then with the additional trail spurting off onto the Bayfield County side, there's a lot of access to the river, which is kind of inaccessible. It's been sought after for many years by the Friends of the White River to, and DNR owns multiple segments all along the river to which this property will then be adjacent and add to the wild corridor, which runs from Maple Ridge Road up near Mason, all the way down to the dam on Highway 112. A remarkable property and because in Ashland County, once we get south of Lake Superior for recreational water-related resources, we have just rivers pretty much. We don't have very many lakes. We have, you know, the Bad River over Copper Falls. We have this wonderful hiking trail in the national forest at Morgan Falls. And so this is a remarkable asset. It's never been on, it's not been on the tax rolls. We're not taking anything off the tax rolls. And it has beautiful, old, large red pine forestry, really remarkable property. So I strongly recommend that this be approved, but because I'm adjacent, I have to abstain.
Any other comments, questions? Otherwise, all in favor...
Brad Ray will abstain.
Brad, go ahead. Brad?
I'm just abstaining as well.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Maxwell Forest project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a resolution supporting non-state infrastructure project at the Schwamigan Humane Association.
Okay, this is a project we're working on with Bayfield County also. About a year ago, our animal control officer retired. And so we had to figure out a new option for lost dogs and cats, who the sheriff picks up or the city picks up or... So we contracted with the humane society, local humane society. They are, don't have space now for any of the, for a lot of the animals they get, both being our animals we bring and then the one where owners drop off their oodles of puppies and kittens. So we're, this between the city and the county and Bayfield County are teaming up together to help them with putting up a new structure along, in addition, to accommodate all of our animals. This will be a long-term solution to animal control for us. And this is, this resolution allows Erica to write a grant for it.
Bill?
Is this going to cost Ashland County anything?
Yes, there's a one-time cost. It's within the budget of $50,000. And the city of Ashland's paying the same, Bayfield County's paying the same. And I've been assured by the mayor that it's in their budget.
Pardon me?
I've been assured by the mayor that it's in their budget.
So the city of Ashland and Bayfield County...
And Bayfield County.
Both kicking in $50,000?
Yep.
Blake?
So $50,000 this year, but then you said that going forward, there won't be expense? How do we...
Other than the, other than the basic animal control expense that we pay them to house the animals.
So annually, what would we expect?
We've been spending, Sue, what do you think, six to eight grand on animal control a year? Yeah, and so that part won't change. I mean, they still have to house feed, send the dogs, cats, vets, all that stuff.
Bill?
Are we applying for a grant to help?
Yes, that's what, that's what this resolution we're talking about right now is.
Can you explain what's happening? So the county is going to write a grant?
Yes.
And if that goes through, then what will happen?
Well, they'll start construction.
Okay. So you're going to actually build a facility?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be in addition to their current facility.
What happens if we don't get the grant? Do we build then?
CHA is, Erica's looking for smaller grants too. Things that are $10,000, $20,000 to cover part of the, in the event that the grant doesn't come through. So the CHA portion will be covered also.
But we could likely have to approve this without a grant if the grant doesn't come through because we're going to need to build this, right?
Eventually, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. But this resolution is just about approving, applying for the grant.
We'll need a motion to...
Make a motion. Blake will make a motion.
Motion by Blake, is there a second?
This is Laura Negro, seconded.
Any other comments, questions? Motion has been made by Blake, seconded by Laura to approve this resolution to apply for the grant supporting the non-state infrastructure project. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is aid to counties with Indian reservations. Oh, did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution to allow the use of opioid funds for opioid treatment.
So we currently have a little over $300,000 in opiate funds that we have not used at all. The state and the WCA both are saying that we should start spending some of it. So we have a situation now where people who are already in treatment with our Health and Human Services Department, they have, the HHS gets a grant from the state to help these people. However, it's going to run out of money at the end of this week. So we're asking with this resolution to use up to $20,000 of our opiate money to get these people through the year and so they have a place to live and continue their treatment. And this is an approved use of the funding.
Laura?
This is Laura Negro, I'll make the motion that we use the opioid funds for treatment.
Befranek, second.
Motion by Laura, seconded by Liz to approve the resolution allowing opioid funds for opioid treatment. Are there any questions or comments? Bill?
Has Health and Human Services approved this?
The committee has not. This came from the HHS director about a week ago, requesting, right before the agenda came on, requesting that we do use the money. So Finance had already had their meeting, so we figured we'd just put it on the county board agenda and that way it's also public out there. The county board approved using opiate funds. So when we, a reporter asks you, you have an answer.
George?
Just to say there are a number of us here who are members of the Health and Human Services Committee, and I for one, you know, would support this, and I'm sure others probably would too.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the resolution allowing use of opioid funds for treatment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, Liz. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to aid to counties with Indian reservations.
Okay, this is the exact same resolution we pass every year. The dates have just changed.
Need a motion? Rich?
I'll make a motion.
We'll give Liz the first and Rich the second. Any other questions or comments? This is like, we said, this is an annual thing that we do. George?
Yeah, even though annual, I don't remember what it is. Could you please give us a really brief explanation?
Oh, we have to pass this resolution each year to get a grant from DOJ to help defray the cost of law enforcement on the reservation.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution to authorize the hiring of MWK LLC for fiscal year 2026.
We're hoping this is the last time you guys see this resolution. We are in the process for hiring a finance director-type person. And once that person is hired, Mike and Steve will help train that person and at least be a sounding board for questions for them. So hopefully this is the last time. And I'll be honest, they want to retire, so.
This is Bill. How does this compare to last year's costs? Is it the same?
It'll be roughly the same, yeah. It's based on how much we use them. And we've been using them less and less every year.
Any other question? Pat?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ron will second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Ron. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution establishing compensation to be paid to all non-represented employees for the calendar year 2026.
All right, so this is the annual step raise for employees. It's the same resolution we paid last year, just the dates are changed. And that would give all employees a two-and-a-half percent raise. It is, the dollar amount is already in the budget.
Laura?
This is Laura Negro, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Laura, seconded by Tom. Any other questions or comments? Bill?
Is anybody getting a greater or lesser amount of raise? Or is this just straight across the board?
Me and the deputies.
Pardon me?
Me and the deputies. The deputies are, obviously there are, and they have a different rate.
Any more questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Debbie Levy resolution.
Okay, so this is our annual debt levy. It includes all of our capital expenses plus property liability insurance, leases on our vehicles, and the remainder, the balance of the sheriff's HVAC. We use 400, half that money from some savings and half is on the debt levy here. I just want to point out, while the number is over $2 million, that includes like the insurance and the lease payments, which we don't borrow from the bank. The actual borrowing from the bank is going to be 1.865 million. So... And this is slightly higher than last year, largely because of the HVAC being $400,000.
Bill?
This money will be paid back during the 2026 year?
It'll be paid back in February or March.
About 2026?
Yeah.
George, do you have a question or... Pat?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Marty? Motion by Pat, seconded by Marty. Any more questions or comments? Laura?
Okay, so the only increase from last year to this year is the J. Okay, so the only increase from last year to this year is the JL? Or what percentage has it increased?
It was increasing by was a hundred and seventy thousand, I think. So we did move some stuff around, um, to help ease the debt levy burden. So, um, like Highway had a seal coating project. Uh, that was two hundred and seventy thousand, I believe. Yeah, that was gonna go on the debt levy. We moved that out as, instead into, um, Mattson Operations Fund, or his Highway Fund. That's for money he earns. That ends up, every few years, gets used to build roads or seal coating. So the, he, this year he had over six hundred thousand dollars in that account. Almost seven hundred. And so we moved that two seventy off the debt levy to help make, make room for the HVAC. So the tax hit would be less.
Okay.
Uh, I'll be honest, uh, nobody's gonna see the difference. Between, once, uh, you know, a hundred and seventy thousand gets spread between the entire equalized value of the county, it's...
George?
Well, excuse my confusion, are we voting on the promissory note? Is that what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, Sue?
Blake abstain.
What's that?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, okay. Uh, resolution to approve unused levy carryover.
Okay, so, um, we had, we had, um, forty some thousand, I, was it, I, forty eight, five nine nine, and I used levy from two thousand and twenty or, or twenty one and twenty two. So with the Finance Committee decided to, that we should use all this levy now before the possibility of losing it comes forward. So we, this requires a resolution on the board to approve using this unused levy amount. It's part of our legal levy limit that just hadn't been used. So, um, we're asking the board to use the whole thing. That forty eight, five nine 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 is in the, reflected in the budget.
Pat?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Gary? Motion by Pat, seconded by Gary, uh, comments, Pat?
Well, to add a little to what the administrator said, we have five years to pass a resolution such as this, or we lose the ability to ever recoup, um, what we didn't use at one point in time. Ashland County is typically about the second lowest in the state in terms of net new construction. The rate at which net new construction goes up dictates how much you can increase the general levy. Um, a year ago, we were actually the lowest in the state. This year, because the city closed out a TIF district, we bumped up to one point one five percent net new construction. But we're typically in that point four to point six percent range, and that's all we can increase it. So we're capturing what we can, while we can, on the ability to increase the general levy. Doesn't mean we have to increase the general levy as much as we're allowed to going forward. It just gives us the ability to do so. It also increases the base in our general levy, so that going forward each year, when our net new construction rate comes out, which again is typically under one percent, it, it helps a little bit in the budget because our base is bigger. Um, and given how our budget is, you know, again, right near the bottom every year in the state, um, this just helps with the budget going forward.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a motion to approve the resolution to approve unused levy left, uh, carryover. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the adoption of the 2026 budget and tax levy. I think the first thing we need to do is close the public hearing. We'll need a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
Ron, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Rich?
This is Rich, I'll second it.
Motion by Ron, seconded by Rich, to close the public hearing on the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, alright, now we'll consider the budget for 2026.
So, we have our budget here. Finance Committee's been working on this since June. Sorry, Sheriff's calling me. Um, so we've been working on this since June. Doesn't make everybody happy, but it funds every, every department as well as we can. Um, it stays within our legal limit. The fifty thousand dollars we talked about earlier for the CHA is in here. It's under the Sheriff's Department. So anyhow, I'll just, I have questions, so I guess it's probably the easiest way to go.
Bill?
Uh, how much does the budget actually increase a percentage? Or what, have you arrived at any type of percentage or dollar amount? That the budget has increased?
Can you hold on, um, I will, I don't have, I don't have the documents in front of me. So let me text Steve Corbell and he can...
I'm, I'm here, Dan.
Okay.
I'm here. So, um, the question I heard was, what is the increase? Is it a percentage or how, how do you determine how much it goes up? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the document on the screen, uh, that Dan has up there shows you the 2025 budget and the 26 budget. And then net change in the tax levy is kinda in the middle of the page next to the names of the departments. You'll see a column saying increase or decrease in tax levy. So I'll pick on Dan. So the administrator's budget on the tax levy is up nine thousand seven eighty-five. You see that? And if you scroll down, you can see each department, some went up, some went down. Um, but that's the net effect. So if you go to the very bottom, and the, the levy is up three hundred and twenty-two thousand oh one three. This includes that carryforward amount you just approved of forty-eight thousand something. So, but each department, um, within the county, you can see the net change in what their levy is from twenty-five this year to next year, proposed.
I, I guess I was interested in the, the net for the, all the departments, not just each individual apartment.
Sure, so then what we would do is we'd take that, uh, three twenty-two oh one three and divide it by your levy from last year, nine, two, three, eight, eight, six, seven. It's off, up roughly three percent, three point four.
George?
Microphone, microphone. George, microphone?
I said, and just taking the expenditures of thirty-eight point nine million divided by thirty-six point three, I get a seven percent increase.
That would be on expenses, yes, that is correct, on expenses. On the levy though, the levy has only changed by three twenty-two. Cause revenues have gone up too. So if you look at from twenty twenty-five, revenues were twenty-five, six ninety-two, one hundred. And they're twenty-eight, oh, twenty-six, four ninety-seven this year, so those went up, you know, by a significant percentage also.
And that other thirty grand comes from other sources, like the federal government for Medicaid.
Um, say, Dan, can you hear me? Mike Tenetchny here?
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to add, um, you know, for proper context here, because of your valuation increase, the levy rate is actually down thirty cents, an estimated levy rate.
Right.
So, I mean, you could take that in context with the dollar amount of the taxes going up, so. Now your levy rate is going down. And again, this is an estimate because every, every district, you know, uses assessed value, but if you divide it the levy by the equalized value, it's down thirty cents.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Bill?
I, I have a couple of questions. Was there anything that was actually cut from this year's budget compared to last year's budget? And, uh, we had several people speak on the AADC. How, how did, what was that last year compared to this year? Was there any comparison or?
Um, there was zero dollars last year, there's zero dollars this year. And Finance Committee did have a discussion on that.
Gary?
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that when the budget process started, we were approximately one point four million over, that we had to cut. And I, I dare say anyone go back to their constituents and tell them that our budget was one point four million at one point. And we somehow cut that to where it is today. That wasn't easy. There were things that had to be cut. We had expenses that we had, the sheriff's, um, HVAC, uh, is a huge expense. If everybody has seen the notice lately, we have a rough problem at H, at the Health and Human Services. Uh, we have to plan for unforeseen things. And I think this budget, considering where we started and where we are today, is probably the best that we can do. And so, like you say, when we first started working, when you're over a million dollars off, uh, and we got it to where it is today, I don't know what else we can do with this budget, thank you.
Pat?
Six years ago I ran because I got my tax bill and I wasn't happy with it. I mean, I was really unhappy with it. Anyway, long story short, I ended up running for the county board to see what I could do about the county taxes and budgets. You know, we found some things that we could change and do better and tighten and live without and all that good stuff. But when I look at this budget and I look at the next two years, um, I don't know what the answers are. Some of you have been here as long as I have, some of you are newer, so let me go through a couple of things if I could. This is a county budget. The county is an arm of the state. Most of our budget is state mandated services. Things that we have to do that we don't have a, a choice on. We've got a little bit of wiggle room, but not a lot. We can only raise our general levy up to the net new construction rate each year. And we average right around the second lowest in the state. Some years, like last year, we were the lowest. Um, that, you know, other years, you know, it's two, from the bottom. And that's just the reality of, of living up here. So if we can only raise the general levy, which is used to pay for wages and benefits for employees and things like that, it doesn't keep up with inflation. Earlier this year, I asked the administrator for the things that we support in the community such as BART and giving the Ashland County Aging Unit some extra money for mules and wheels and things like that. Where does that money come from and can any of it go on the debt levy? We can put as much as we want on the debt levy for things like roads and buildings, there's not a cap on that. But we can't fund the other things like BART and the aging unit, um, through debt levy. So when we look at the pots of money the county has, we have to look at them as money that we can use to pay employees. But it's also the money that we use to support things beyond employees. And it's hard enough to come up with money for our employees as it is. We've made some changes. One of the bigger ones is health insurance. Um, some of you were here when I started on, on finance. We had, um, over a million dollars to the negative on our health insurance. We've had undercharged employees, we're not setting enough aside. We've addressed that issue. We've changed the state health plan last year. So the first year in that, we had a thirty percent surcharge. The budget you're looking at, there's a fifteen percent. And then next year, there won't be. This is gonna save us somewhere like four to six hundred thousand a year versus had we not done this. So we're gonna be money ahead in a year or so. So it's an important change because it saves us money. And we've done some other things and, you know, La Pointe with law enforcement there, that's no longer in this budget because we just can't come up with the money for those sorts of things. But all of those sort of things are not enough to address going forward where this county is headed. I want to go back to twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one, we had two failed referendums, about sixty forty. So the taxpayers of Ashland County have been clear, don't raise my taxes. They've been really clear about that. And under state law, it makes us make some decisions that can be really hard. There are things in this budget that are really hard. And it's hard on some of the employees here because we can't give them or get them everything that we would like to. We just can't. So how do we get out of the pickle over the last four years? Well, there's several things. One is the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. We got about three million for that. We carved out a million for Health and Human Services right away for things that we had to do. We put a million dollars into this building because it needed it. All of that money went to good uses. And then there was a local assistance to tribal consistency fund or LITCF money. We got about one point, most of one point two million there. We're using four hundred thousand of that for the sheriff's HVAC this year because we have to. That system is nearly thirty years old. We've been putting money into it to keep it going for the last few years, and it really should have been replaced earlier. And then there's a Sandburn tax issue. We got about two million dollars from that. We use that money for good purposes. But more importantly, or in some ways in the long run, we don't have to make dispersments to the city or the schools anymore for taxes that we couldn't collect. Those are the three big things where we had some good fortune, if you will. When we look forward, we don't know where more good fortune is gonna come from. And the answer, apparently from talking to our consultants and our administrators, we need something really good to come out of Madison or Washington to avoid where we were five years ago. So we've had three good things, ARPA, the LITCF money, and the Sandburn tax issue. We've also changed the state health insurance plan. And for the town of La Pointe, I understand the concern, you know, why we're not funding that anymore. But it's these sort of things in the budget and some of these decisions, where how do you make ends meet? It's hard. The administrator, when he was talking about the debt levy, one of the things we did is we drew down money from the Highway, um, Fund to keep tax rates, you know, more reasonable. But part of what that means is going forward in the very near future, if we're gonna stick to the Highway Improvement Plan, we need to replace those dollars with debt levy in the not so distant future. If we want to, we could let our roads get worse. The state isn't gonna make us have good county roads. But if you want good county roads, we gotta fund them. And I think county roads that are in good shape are important for economic development because nobody wants to live somewhere or visit somewhere where the roads are garbage. We all know that. So it is part of economic development. We also have the Sheriff's Department staffed up for the first time in a while. And I know the Sheriff's Department is important to everyone down county, I learned that early on. So we could cut number of deputies, we could cut patrols. But do we want to do that? I think the answer is no. I think that message has been loud and clear. And then in finance, we've been working on a fund balance policy, meaning how much do we have in our unassigned fund? The good news is, with this money that we've been able to get, we have above what we should have put away, twenty to thirty percent of our expenditures that would come from the general fund. That is the good news, we have that money there. So then when we asked the question, if we actually take some money out of that unassigned fund balance for anything that we want, including giving to a community program, how do we replace it? That's where the bad news comes. That's where the bad news comes. Sales tax, for example. Legally, we could squirrel some of that away in our unassigned fund balance. But it goes into the budget every year. Everywhere that we look where we could squirrel money away from, you know, legally put it into the unassigned fund balance, we end up having to use it for the budgets that you see each year. We don't have the capacity to put money back into our savings right now. So what does that mean next year? If you want to give employees raises next year, it means we're going to have to dip further into savings. And I said, if you want to give raises, you know, the two and a half percent. Right now, we, we would have to look at savings. Two years from now, on health insurance, because, you know, next year, our, our surcharge will drop to zero. So that kind of offsets the increase that the state charges in health insurance. But two years from now, because we spend around three million a year on health insurance, if the increase in health insurance is in the neighborhood of ten percent, this year, the state's increase was eleven percent, we need to come up with three hundred thousand dollars just to provide the same health insurance coverage to employees. So we don't know where the money for raises is going to come from. We don't know where the money for health insurance in a couple of years will come from. We know we got to add money back on the debt levy for highway. And then there's everything else that goes up far more than our net new construction. So would we like to give more money to more places and do more things? Sure. The administrator went through departments. I don't want to say nickel and diming their budgets, but when you start looking at office supplies and little things to get the budget where it is, you know, we've asked our departments and our employees to quite literally tighten their budgets as much as we can. And so next year, it's going to be harder. It's going to be much harder next year. And two years from now, honestly, on finance, other than running our savings down more, we don't know where the money's coming from. We could move a few more things to debt levy, but at some point with the general levy being what it is, we really will need a referendum to pass. But given we've had two that failed sixty forty, we can't count on a referendum passing. But sometime in the next year or two, probably in the coming year, the county really needs to look at, what if a few years down the road, do we get a referendum to pass? And what if we don't? Then what changes do we need? And it's just going to be, you know, it's going to be harder. So, you know, with the ADC, they shouldn't take not getting funding as a judgment on their value. The county is supporting the chamber right now. We do it, we all know it because we want tourists here to spend money and raise sales tax for us. So we're supporting the chamber. The city is not supporting the chamber. The city is supporting the ADC and this budget does not. For the half of the people that live in the city of Ashland, we're supporting both the chamber and the ADC in one budget or the other. But the ADC is also, their tax forms, their nine nineties are online because they're a nonprofit. They've been able to add money to their savings the last couple of years. You know, and, and good for them, and I mean that. So they're adding money to their savings. We're drawing down money from our savings. Their rent that they get in 2022 was two hundred fifty one thousand twenty-three. It was three hundred thousand last year with Northland closing, the Burke Center from Northland moved to the ADC. So did the Ashland County Aging Unit. So they've got rental income, which is good. I mean, so you've got money there coming in to provide some stealth level of staffing. But the things that they're doing right now was they got about, you know, one point eight million from the Department of Administration to provide the services they're providing to entrepreneurs. You know, that's one point eight million come into area and that's a good thing. That's a positive thing to provide those things. But that, they got an extension to run into 2025 to finish trying to, you know, provide those services and the grant money that they can give out. And I understand that it's not easy to replace those dollars. But for the county, we don't have ways of replacing those good things that happened because of COVID and other things. For us, we don't have a way of replacing those dollars either. And so you have enough rent to provide some level of staffing. Is it going to be as much as you once had unless you find money somewhere? No. But the staffing there, you know, when the question was, why not five, 10, 15? If you can get that, great. But the pool of money for the county that supports our employees is the same pool of money that goes to outside organizations such as BART, the Aging Unit or anywhere else. It's the same pool of money. And so why not five, 10 or 15? Well, one, the county can't afford it. In the highway department last year, within this budget, we added a mechanic. It came to the executive committee. I'm on that because I'm Chair of Finance. I had a lot of questions. To put it mildly, as some of you know, kicked it back to finance, got answers to a lot of questions. And from a budget perspective, they're able to show that that additional person should be able to generate enough revenue because they can take on more work and then build plow trucks in-house instead of hiring that, that up. And we're going to be able to see from their budgets if that's all panning out. So we put the highway department, correct me if I'm wrong, sort through the wringer to make sure we could justify adding a highway mechanic. And we came to the conclusion that that made fiscal sense. We also had Health and Human Services add a person, same thing. They had to show it would be budget neutral. So we put the county departments through a, a thorough process to make sure we have the staff we need, but not more than we do need or can get by with. And some of you, if you read your email, know that we struggle sometimes to have as much staff in some areas as we would like to have. And so part of what I look at on this is with employees with raises and benefits going forward, I know darn well, we're not very far from the point where we're going to have to have conversations about what raises can we afford. And you look at their raise history going back ten and fifteen years, they had some years with no raises. That wouldn't be new if budgets are tight. The city had years with no raises. And I think for public employees, they deserve raises that are reasonable. And I think we have a responsibility first and foremost to the employees to be forward looking, to do our best to make sure that they get fair raises. We can attract and keep good people. So for the ADC, this isn't about the work you do or the value. This is about, we're an arm of the state, most of it's mandated. And we don't have to look very far down the road. And honestly, whoever's got to make decisions on budgets, especially a year from now will be hard. Two years from now, honestly, we don't have answers except burning through our savings to a point where, and some of you might remember this, January 2021, we had a finance meeting. And one of the things we were told, the county would send checks to pay bills at the time, is we were told they had to call some of those places and say, hold the check. We don't have the money to cover it. We got to wait till the tax receipts come in. It's not funny, but that's where we were. Hold the check, we can't cover it right now. We don't want to go back there. So that's my perspective on the budget.
Any other comments, questions? Laura?
Everybody knows I've been in a very huge supporter of AADC. I do understand what position we are in, but also this is the second meeting in a row where people have come in, which are our constituents, and have mentioned that this is something that they'd like to see as a priority. Now, we don't have many people come in. And this time, they could only raise a few that came in, but they had a whole group of them that we did not listen to last time. So I think this needs to be a little bit of a priority because it is finance and economic development. And while I understand we have a housing issue here, we, the people that help pay for those things are also the people that move in, buy houses and have businesses because they help contribute to that tax income that we get. So I think this needs to be a priority for finance then and economic development to look into this. And whether we helps with some grant funding or some kind of money pool to be able to help. I mean, that kind of piece feeds into our overall picture. Economic development needs to be at the top of our list along with making sure our, our employees are taken care of. It's not, it's not an either or, it's one of those things feeds into the other. So that needs to be more planning. I understand how hard it was to cut these kinds of things. I've been on that committee a few times. It, it's, it never feels good. So I, I appreciate what finance has done and our consultants and Dan with limiting things and having to pick and choose through there. But I also see that there's this other need in the community that we need to take serious because it's, it's two whole meetings in a row now that they've sent people in, that people wanted to come in. They've taken time out of their business day. And we don't get a lot of issues like that in our meetings in the middle of the workday. So I hope everybody just kind of takes note and, and that this stays one of our priorities.
Ben?
I want to ask the administrator a question because I don't want to speak for him on this. But the county grant writer you oversee directly, and the county grant writer obviously is working on grants directly related for the county, but also with organizations and other communities of various supports, one of which my understanding is on any potential grant applications involving the ADC. Do you want to speak to, you know, the grant writer partnering with the ADC on grant writing activity for projects that are of mutual interest?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, she's helping out all other organizations too. Like we talked earlier, she's helping out with the CHA, which also actually helps the county out. You know, she's helped out some of our local towns, which at least taught them how to do grants themselves. So I, so she is helping out the local communities and they all know they can call her and ask for more help if they need it. But yeah, she has, when the opportunity arises to work with AADC, she certainly will help, does and will help them. You know, but, but the goal is for her, even if the grant situation at the federal government is a mess, to be polite, there's still a bunch of private ones, state ones, you know, that we can at least use her skills to help out the community as a whole. And that generally turns out helping out the county as a whole, helps out the city. You know, she did help the city with a COPS grant. So, you know, if they get that, we'll be doing the administration of it and getting the de minimis fee. But yeah, she's ready to, she'll, she'll help the AADC if the help is needed. And she does talk to them quite a bit.
Bill?
In a perfect world, what would AADC ask for to raise? What kind of levy would they want to be raised so we can look in the future? Have they come up with a figure or?
Well, in the past, it's been fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty?
Yeah.
Gary?
Unless there are other questions, I'm going to.
Yes, this is Elizabeth Franek. I do have questions.
Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, um, like somebody that just doesn't know their numbers or anything, anybody looking at this budget in the public, I mean, how much does this raise or decrease taxes? Another question I have is how can the county start increasing the revenue and net new construction? Um, and I just want to echo support in the future for entities like AADC and Northwest App. Thank you.
Liz, it raises the allowable levy by about three hundred thousand dollars. A, a good portion of that is because, one, the resolution we just voted on. And two, because we did actually have a very good year for net new construction. The city took off, closed the TIF, District in Downtown. So all the, all the tax dollars were flowing into the TIF now go back to the county, the city and the school. So we did get a little extra revenue that way. So while taxpayers will not see an increase with the levy limit portion because we, you know, we're at our limit, we've always been at our limit. And the people who are in the TIF had already been paying their tax, taxes anyhow. It's just they've been paying it towards the TIF. Now, I can't guarantee individual taxpayers will, won't see a tax increase. You know, I could see a tax increase based on the equalized value, the assessed value of my house went up compared to the rest of the county. Mr. Metzinger could see his tax, taxes go down because his assessment went down based on the equalized value in the county. So I, while we can't guarantee what happens to each individual person, we can say that it's not going to affect people in generally speaking. If, if your town gets, if your house gets assessed more, then you're going to pay more. And that's a local decision. That's made by the local assessor. We don't do it. And I, I can say a lot of the towns down south are starting that process of reassessing their properties because if, because they've been so under market value for so long that they are required by state statutes to do it. And if they don't, the DOR will come in and do it for them and bill them. Now, where taxes are going to go up is in the debt levy. And that's roughly two hundred thousand dollars. And that's to account for, really, they account for the Sheriff's Department HVAC. We were able to reduce debt levy by two hundred thousand and add the HVAC in, which was four hundred thousand, sat raising it about two hundred thousand. So that's where the increase people will see is, is in the debt levy portion. And I think Metzinger might want to have a clarification.
I, I just would like to comment that the state raises the equalized value of the property based on sales and new construction. And the sales have really been high in the lower part of the county now. And we, or the, the rest of the county was in compliance before. But it seems like the southern end of the county, the sales have been a lot higher and that's why the state's raised the equalized value. So I, I just kind of have a question. If, if we would raise, we can change the budget right now before it's passed. But if we were to raise like ten thousand dollars or whatever figure we throw out, how much would that affect the total amount of taxes that an individual paid if it's divided over the equalized value in the whole county?
Well, we can't, we can't not increase general levy. We're already maxed out on how much general levy we can raise. So there's no ten thousand dollars there available.
Okay.
We could raise ten thousand dollars in the debt levy, but it would have to be a debt levy eligible expense. So that's basically anything that the county puts its full faith and credit on. That's how we were able to do the car leases because we got an opinion from the DOR saying, while we're putting our full faith and credit on it, it's debt levy eligible.
So we could not put any amount from ADC, AADC on the debt levy?
No, that's not a debt levy eligible expense.
Yeah, and, and what I think I'm hearing is that between the Finance Committee and the Board over the next few months, we should invest time in seeing if, if we really want to go back to giving money to Ashland Area Development Corp., we should figure out how to do it right and can we afford it? And I'll just give you a quick example of what Bill is saying. And, and maybe some of you have heard me say this. I had a neighbor's house that was assessed for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars with a hundred and sixty acres, house in a hundred and sixty. Now, figure this out in your heads. The house was sold with only eighty of those hundred and sixty acres for six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, that tax bill is going to be extreme when it. Now, that tax bill is going to be extreme when it comes through. Because they had been assessed at 200 and some thousand, now they're assessed for less land, but at 670. So, their share of the tax bill is going to be higher. And in this, well, they're going to pay on assessed value, Bill.
No, it depends if the assessor raised the assessed value. If the assessor did not raise the assessed value, the taxes will be close to the same, but you got to factor that in.
Right, but any assessor that sees that is going to say, not only did that house sell for three times what it was assessed for, but property along the, the same road, which was divided into parcels and sold for huge amounts. And that's what's happening in my part of the county, and people are concerned. Because they're saying, if all of those parcels are being bought out, then they're not being bought up by locals. They're being bought up by people from other areas. They're concerned, and they come to me and say, well, how's that going to affect my taxes? And I said, I can't tell you that, but the assessor can. So, we have to be careful. But I do agree that between finance and the county board and us that are sitting here, we should look at, say, what should we do? We had people come to us, and Laura came to us with her facts and figures, and I think it was approved. And some of the other groups came with the facts and figures, and it was approved. But we had a limited amount of money this year. We may be able to figure it out for next year. And if there's no other questions, and I'm not cutting anyone off, but I would be willing to make a motion to approve, adopt the 2026 budget and tax levy. Second.
Motion by Gary, seconded by George. Motion by Gary, seconded by George to approve the 2026 budget. Any comments or questions? Laura?
The only comment I want to make is between the aging unit and AADC, the aging unit services are state mandated, so it's not the same level of stuff, so just point of clarification maybe.
And even more point of a clarification, it's federally mandated too, under the older Americans Act.
Yep. Bill?
I, I think with this budget issue, we should have a roll call vote.
We normally do anyway, I think.
Well, you know, if, if not.
Pat?
Just in case the aging unit director doesn't know it, on the transportation part of your budget, you know, as we look at things, I think we got to start looking at things really from this point forward to a year from now. But I want to look at the transportation piece, see, and I know we've talked about partnering with BART. We, we don't give you a lot of money towards transportation, but it's things like that, I don't know all the answers to, could we do it more efficiently? But every little thing is going to help. We're not going to find big things that we can change going forward. It's going to be smaller things, but they're going to add up. And the administrator, this was a few months ago, made a comment to me, I hope he doesn't mind me saying this, but but I learned this when I was on the city council, the administrator there, somehow we managed to get through budgets, and it took me a while before I realized he did it largely by leaving positions on field when somebody left. And when I pointed that out to him after a few years, he smiled and he says, yeah, you figured out what I've been up to, what I'm doing and why. And I think for the county, you can tell me if I'm wrong, or if you wish I wouldn't have said this, but I think when the county has positions that become vacant, we're going to take a real hard look at, do we need to fill them right away? Or can we reorganize and change? And, because we never want to lay anybody off, let anybody go. But when things open up, we're going to see if we can get by for a while, or if it's an opportunity for changing stuff. Because we're going to have to do that if we're going to keep being able to give raises and providing the benefits we do.
Okay, and as a, as a parliamentary point of order, this budget needs 14 votes to be approved.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2026 budget and tax levy. This will be a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Microphone, please.
Yes.
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 Please use your microphone.
Yes.
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 Negro?
Yes.
Metzinger?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Puffel, excused? Franek?
Yeah.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Standor?
Yes.
Reamer?
Yes.
Eighteen, yes? No, no's. Zero no's.
2026 budget is approved. Next item is administrator updates.
Um, okay, I only got one, one real thing to tell you guys. Our joint dispatch with Bayfield County won an award from the Wisconsin Policy Forum. Then they are going to be, have a feature article in the next WCA magazine. So, I look forward to that. So, it's an innovative, this state feels this is one of the most innovative things coming out, and I'll be honest, I wouldn't be surprised if other counties don't take our experience and run with it. So, um, I guess I'm not anticipating a November meeting. Big reason is our normal time is Thanksgiving week. And so, I'll talk to Chairman Murtagh about anything in December we might need. And if you, we'll just try to make a decision a few weeks beforehand, so everybody has ample time. It will be off our normal schedule if we do, because again, that's Christmas week. So, we'd have to do it beforehand. So, everybody will get notified as soon as possible, whether we're having one or not. And then just say thank you for voting for the budget. And I, and while I'm talking about, I want to do thank Sue. She did a lot of work on this and making everything work right.
Hey, Steve.
Pat?
So, for the sheriff's HVACs, the first half of this, it's 798,000 for the whole thing, the first half is coming out of the LATCF funding.
Yes.
When I looked at the investments as of the last finance meeting, it doesn't look like we've drawn down money to pay them. I thought we were paying that on the front end with them. Could you explain where we're at with paying them?
Two things, one, I did forget, and thanks to Michelle for putting it up, there is a progress report for the HVAC here and pictures of everything. Some of us were lucky enough to actually go see it yesterday. So, yeah, um, so yes, you're correct, Pat. What we've been doing is we have dedicated the money from the LATTF fund to that project. But right now, we have enough money in our cash and our regular bank account. We are keeping the money in an interest-bearing account, so we get more interest on it. When we need to transfer the money over, it's there, but in the meantime, it's earning more interest, which.
Makes sense, good.
Yeah, and we have not, I, I want to warn everybody, there is going to be, our interest rates are going to go down. The Fed will cut the interest rates once, it sounds like they're going to do so this week again, so the interest we earn is going to go lower. So, and the treasurer does post that in her report in the finance committee, and if anybody wants to see, they can see all the accounts there.
County board supervisors updates. George?
Uh, so for the planning committee, as Laura well pointed out, we are extremely appreciative when people come and give us feedback through public comment. And you can appreciate that when it's a long-term thought rather than a short-term issue is even something that's more on the back burner for folks. And so, it's really hard to get people to come in and give public comment and give us insight as to what the people of Ashland County actually want in a long-term plan. So, I would be grateful if you would take copies of the planning committee's newsletter back to your local town halls or other appropriate location in your district to help elicit the public's attention to this question, that they are invited, uh, very invited to come and make comment at our meetings. Thank you.
Laura?
Kind of not a county board supervisor report, but on the aging unit. So, we're still working on the meals. We're doing a lot of the things that Pat said, kind of cutting budgets and such, any extraneous expenses. Just trying to find some place that the, the meal pricing will level out. So, we've got a few more meal vendors we can check for our off days. So, right now, it's three hot meals for our home-delivered folks and two shelf-stable. I'm working with restaurants, there's a few of them that are almost through the whole process, but there's things out of my control that have to be done in order for them to actually be a meal site. So, I'm just, I'm at the mercy of other people now. I have to, I have to take a breath in there and just let that stuff wash out, or I don't sleep at all. So, um, but when you have questions, please, 90% of the time, you can find me in my office someplace. I may be scooting back and forth, moving boxes, doing things in the storage or, or anything, but y'all have my cell phone numbers. If, if you have constituents that are concerned, give me a call. I, I talk to people all the time about this. I, I don't have any qualms about talking about any individual space or place situation, so just know that I'm, I'm waiting to hear from you if you have questions.
That's it. Go ahead, Dan.
I forgot to mention, with the, with the coming cancellation or how you say, stoppage of food share monies this weekend. So, um, yeah, it starts on Sunday. Ashland County and Bayfield County are joining together to do a food drive to help all of our local community members who depend on food share. And so, we'll be working with whoever the brick, and any churches that want to be part of it, any local governments that want to be part of it. So, the goal is to make sure, to do what we can to make sure that people who are in need get food. We'll have a drop-off here for dry goods, non-perishable goods. So, canned food, rice, beans, that kind of stuff. If anybody wants to donate. Or you can go straight and give it to the brick if you like.
This is Liz Beth Franek. Can I make a comment?
Uh, go ahead, Liz.
Yeah, um, to piggyback back on, piggybank, to piggyback on what Dan was just saying about the food share program, a lot of us retail cashiers are kind of worried, you know, with more increasing with theft and everything, but this is a great plan for the counties to do with the, the food drives. And I'm wondering if, you know, the brick can have more non-perishable items, because that's what people are worried about, the milk, the eggs, stuff like that. Does anybody have that information, what they have to offer? And, you know, are they going to, um, because there's going to be more people that are non-food share people that are going to be going to food banks too. So, are we prepared? And also, there was a comment on, um, there was a site with Northern College alumni doing kind of a food drive thing too. And I'm just worried about, um, I think our store is more worried about people that are abusing the program and are among the, like the homeless and everything. Not all homeless are criminals, but the ones are, we're just worried about increasing theft and stuff like that. Thank you.
Sue'd like to say something.
Um, I don't want to go back to the budget, but I do want to say that this year, everything went so well. And I want to give kudos to the department heads and everyone that helped us work on it, because we tried, last year, we implemented a different way of doing it, and this year, it just went so smoothly. And with the help of Dan and making cuts, but with all the departments getting their stuff into us on time and interacting with us on different things, I appreciate how it went this year. It went extremely well. So, thank you to everyone that was involved.
Gary?
Yeah, and I will say something that unfortunately is probably on being recorded, but I want to thank Clarence for taking over today. I have to be careful. In the last three or four weeks, I was in the hospital four different times on an emergency basis, and luckily for me, yesterday I had surgery. So, things are good. But during that time, I learned a valuable lesson, that when you go to the hospital or emergency room and you see different doctors, sometimes they don't read what happened yesterday. They're trying to treat you today. And I got caught up in multiple prescriptions. And in the last week and a half, in between all of these situations, I had two speaking engagements. And I thought I was stronger than I was, and it didn't work out. And so, first of all, I'd like to thank the people that were in the hospital and figured out what the problem was, that you don't mix morphine, oxycontin and Valium and think you can operate. I'm doing fine. The surgery went well, and hopefully within a week or two, I'll be back to my normal, maybe even dancing or something, but I really need to thank those folks that finally figured out that they need to read. And I need to thank my wife for picking me up off the floor four times and getting me into a vehicle to get to the hospital, so thank you Clarence for helping out and, and, and it's, it's just a note, if, if anybody ever is ill, sick, write down what you've done the day before, because it's, it's, it could have been worse than it was. But I'm, I'm happy that we got through the meeting okay, and I thank everybody here and so. And those who knew what was going on probably understood that I might not have made perfect sense all the time, but so, thank you.
Pat?
I want to echo what Sue said. As we went through the budget process, department head, staff, Dan, Mike and Steve worked really, really well together to get to where we got on the budget. And it meant that everybody had to take some hard looks, decide what they could live without, or at least live without for now. And I know that can't be easy, because it means if I let go of this in my budget today, I might not get it next time or later, you know, those sort of things. So, the fact that they worked so well together is a credit to them and to how the county operates. And as I would talk to Dan and get updates and stuff, you know, things would make sense on where they were headed, you know, and what was going on, but he sent out a list of detail of the changes, the cuts. You know, when you start going through office supplies and stuff like that. You know, when you start going through office supplies and stuff like that, you know, you're scraping the bottom of the barrel pretty hard, and they did that, so it's a credit to, to everyone that worked on that, so I, I appreciate it.
Just, just a quick note too, if anybody has Dick Pufal's phone number or C stick, please give him a call. He's been going through some tough times too, and I think he appreciates knowing he's still part of the Board. So if you get a chance, and if you don't have his number, I know Pat has it right handy, and, you know, I think he'd appreciate a call once in a while and just let us, let him know that we're thinking of him.
It's on the list of supervisors' contact information.
Any other supervisors have any comments, updates? Otherwise, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Ron will make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Ron, seconded by Blake, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.